Call the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Fargo Park District, of the City of Fargo, to order on Thursday, March 19th at 4:00 PM or 4:02 PM exactly. Let's move down through the items. Approval of the agenda. Is any changes to the agenda date?
No changes, Mr. President.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right. Item three, Fargo Park District's response to COVID-19. I believe, Dave, you're presenting?
Yes, thank you. We just wanted to update the Commissioners as part of this agenda. We've got a couple of things to cover. We've got our response to COVID-19, our plans and procedures, and then our emergency resolution. So just to give you an update on what we've done recently, in the past weeks, everybody knows, things are very fluid. They change from, you know, not even month to month, but week to week, day to day, and hour to hour. So one thing we've done as a park district, cancellations of programs and events. As you know, we, Courts Plus has now been closed since last night at 11:00 PM. We worked with the other fitness clubs in town and wanted to make sure we were all on the same page with that. We also closed a lot of our facilities to the public. This includes the depot. We only have meetings by, whether we call a special meeting or somebody else calls a special meeting, otherwise the depot and all of our other facilities are closed down to the general public, and they need to notify us if they need to meet with any of us. We've sent out employee communications, as was CC, to all the Commissioners. We did send out a, an email to all staff letting them know what our approach is to the COVID-19 virus, and if you guys have any questions, feel free to call. And then we continue to follow state, federal, and local guidelines, and CDC guidelines in relationship to this pandemic. So just wanted to kind of give you guys an update of what we've done so far, and if anybody has any questions. The other directors are sitting in the Goldberg Room, and they are joining us by teleconferencing, just so we could keep our spatial separation into that 10 people per room. So if anybody has any questions for myself, the directors, or Diane, please feel free to call, feel free to ask.
Has there been, have the directors talked to their people and, you know, got a sense of how comfortable they are? Are they nervous? Because, you know, in general, out in the world, I mean, when the run on toilet paper, we've all joked about that, but there's, there's a lot of uncertainty, and a lot of people are really nervous about this. And I think it would be important, if they haven't already, to touch base with their staff to make sure that they, aside from the job, you know, what are the stressors you're dealing with and those kinds of things?
Yes, and as you said, Mr. President, we have reached out to our staff, and that's one thing that prompted the all-staff email. And so our directors have reached out, and we just wanted to cover that, maybe in the plans and procedures, and let you know what we found out. But yes, we have reached out to them. We, we were borrowing a form from the City of Fargo of what they use for their continued operations, and we're going to start, we're going to dig into that a little more as things progress. But we have met with our staff. We've tried to figure out a baseline of, you know, what are the employees feeling? What are their abilities to perform their work? You know, and then some different processes to move forward with that. Procedures, whether it's working from home, flex time, but we can come, cover that maybe more in item number four, and if you're, if you'd like, I can just proceed to that. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. So item number four is kind of what are our plans and procedures, and, and we've met on a regular basis with, with our directors and our HR team. As I mentioned before, we, we've been working with the City of Fargo. We've been in touch with, you know, the local government agencies, the other park districts from around the state. We do have a conference call with all the directors from around the state tomorrow at 10:00 AM. So, you know, while, this will be the first time everybody's kind of got together on the same phone call. We have been in touch with, I've been in touch with Minot, I've been in touch with West Fargo, Bismarck, Grand Forks, Dickinson. So just to let you know, we are reaching out to the other entities. We want to know what they're doing. We've reached out to Family Wellness and the YMCA, so we're all on the same page when, when we're, we're looking at any type of these closures or cancellations or different circumstances. One thing we found, we were looking for when we talked to our employees, and basically this just involves how, what is their ability to perform their job function at the Fargo Park District? And I think we've all are aware of, you know, the ability of people to work from home nowadays with, with technology, and we do have some staff that, we do have that technology. They do have the ability to perform their job function at home. We're continuing to work in with staff. So that's one, one, one ability for the separation. We've also got flex times that we're going to be looking at incorporating, and this has to do with, you know, especially with the daycare and the school needs, and, and watching out for young ones at home is, is do they have to stay home and take care of kids? Can we offer a split shift? Can we offer maybe a late-night shift? We just, we just want to be as flexible as possible for everybody so they can perform their daily job functions. So while we reached out to all of our employees and, and kind of asked them, what are your needs as staff to perform your job functions? And we've got kind of a breakdown, and we feel, so the directors worked with their team, and we're currently aware, of aware of less than 20 employees that need to work from home or work on a modified schedule right now. At this time, no employees have indicated they are unable to work. So we haven't come across the point where, due to some unforeseen circumstances, where they just can't make it into work. They've got childcare needs. Nobody at this time has let us know that that's something we need to address right now. Not saying that wouldn't happen in the future, but right now, for this flex time and people working at home, we've got seven in Operations Department. We've got three from Programming, one in the Business Office, two from Valley Senior Services, and two or three in our Enterprise Department. So I think all of our staff feel the need that they want to, you know, put in a, a good day. They want to be compensated for working. We haven't seen anybody right now that, that just sees that need, that they can't make it to work. And, you know, I guess one of my thoughts maybe be, operations is kind of a, a physical, task-related position, and right now, everybody's willing to, you know, try to get their time in and make things work out. So we feel we have enough work to keep our employees engaged. You know, we might not be necessarily running programs, or crafts, or anything like that, but, you know, there are jobs across the park district, and as we speak now, we're constantly adding to that list of things that, you know, we just haven't been able to get to, but there's things that we need to get to. A lot of it could relate to, you know, just, you know, you kind of say a spring cleaning of facilities, or a deep cleaning of facilities. We've got, we're transitioning into SharePoint. We've got documents that need to be scanned. And if we can continue to do these things with that social distancing and separation, we want to make it as safe of a working environment as possible. We want people to feel comfortable to be able to perform these, their tasks, and, you know, we want everybody to work together on this. One thing we'd just like the Commissioners to think about, while hopefully it doesn't get to this point, if there ever comes a recommendation from higher authorities, whether it's be national, state, or local, about a sheltering in place, you know, this is probably something we're going to have to look at in the future, maybe having another special board meeting or something, and how do we, how do we handle staff at that time and compensation? And reassuring everybody, I mean, at that point, the anxiety level's going to be very high. We're going to want to make sure we, we take care of our staff as, you know, everybody around the country and, and the world is. So that's just something, just on the horizon. Hopefully, we don't get to that point. I just want to let you know, we're staying on top of CDC guidelines. Federal, state, and local health officials, we're in constant contact with. And at this point right now, as I said before, all of our staff are able to work their hours in, and we don't, as I said, things change from day to day, hour to hour. If things would change, and we find out that maybe an employee has some extenuating circumstances that doesn't allow them to get in, or doesn't allow them to work flex time, or work from home, I guess myself, I would like, you know, the Commissioners to consider allowing myself, the Executive Director, along with HR staff and the other directors, to kind of address those on an individual basis and try to be as flexible as possible, and see what we can work out. Because we want to make sure our employees, you know, we want to keep that anxiety level down, and we want to make sure, you know, everybody's still, you know, getting a paycheck and everything.
So curiosity, I mean, what is our policy? And I'm assuming maybe we don't have a policy, and it's time to develop a policy. But in a case like that, generally, and maybe get a, a feel from the Commissioners, you know, if we would be okay if they would use vacation time and then go into sick time? At least have the discussion to, so you have an idea what we're comfortable with. And thankfully, right now, it's really no one, and we don't know how long it's going to last, or how many that could be.
Yeah, I think-
I'm sure we would have another meeting if it's about-
Yeah, and I think that, that's what I just kind of want to prepare you for. Right now, I think our policy is, you know, if you're sick, we require you to take sick leave. You're not allowed to take vacation if you're sick unless you absolutely run out of sick leave. I guess one thing I'd like to consider, you know, with some new employees, you know, that might not have been here very long, they might not have a big bank of sick leave or vacation banked up. And so that might be something that we might have to address, you know, if they have three or four days, and all of a sudden that gets used up. You know, every agency's different from around the state, whether it's park districts, local government. What do you do in, in, you know, that situation? Do you allow them to go negative? Do we just, you know, as a board, we, we make them whole, and we pay them for that time? That's something we just need to consider moving into the future, and how we're going to deal with that if, if that situation should happen.
So one question I have is, obviously, if an employee gets sick, we have a plan for that. If their child gets sick, we have a plan for that. But what if someone in their household, or they've been exposed, and they're forced to self-quarantine? Do we have a plan for what they use then? Sick leave, vacation, or otherwise?
Well, I, yeah, and that's kind of some things we got to work through the details. I know Diane probably has some information on that with the new, was it, the, federal government came out with some guidelines on whether it's emergency sick leave or family wellness attributed, or?
If an individual needs to stay home due to childcare, or for a family member that is ill, then that would fall under the paid family leave that was just signed into law last night.
But if, let's say my spouse gets sick, and I'm now supposed to stay home and self-quarantine, I'm not caring for my spouse, so what would that, do we have a plan for what we're going to have that fall under?
I think that would fall under, my personal opinion is that would fall under the paid family leave.
That's what we talked about in my day job, too.
So they would use, I would use sick leave if I had to stay home because I'm quarantining?
The paid family leave, 10 days, the employee has to use, according to the federal laws as it is right now, the employee has to use 10 days of vacation or sick time, and then the employer does have to pay two-thirds after that.
And that's how it is now, but that could change, too.
Well, that's, that's what they signed into law last night. I mean, everything on that is very fluid. I'm not exactly sure how all of that would work. There hasn't been any, enough time to sort of delve into the nuts.
So that's what we're going to use as our guidelines, is what the federal government comes out with, or local, state, as this progresses?
As of this moment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Talk a little bit about Courts Plus. I mean, we have a facility that's closed, and how many people that impacts right now, and I'm assuming their list is probably really long, that we could get some of the things done that we haven't had time to. How many people roughly, you know, full-time, and then I assume they'll all just still continue to plan to work, and, and we'll have things for them to do?
Yes. Carolyn, did you hear that question? Rusty was asking how many full-time staff at Courts Plus, and then part-time as well, Rusty, or just full-time?
Well, just how many people we, we plan on, you know, if they want to stay on and continue to work. I think that's a special case where we've closed a facility, and they really don't have an option. Whether they continue, continue to work there, or work in Ops, or I just wonder what our plan is.
Yeah, and I, go ahead, Carolyn.
That's exactly what we're talking about right now, is that for the initial time, we will take care of what needs to be taken care of inside Courts Plus. But our intention is that there's plenty of work to do in operations programming, in administrative offices, and the staff will be kept busy, whether they are homeworking, or they're in at Courts Plus, or in safe environments, working out of the park zone.
So just to expand on that, your question, Rusty, too, is that I contacted Grand Forks and Bismarck, as Dave talked about. They're following the same exact things that we're doing, just like Carolyn said, that they're, first and foremost, of that facility, they're cleaning that facility. But then what happens after that is they get moved to a different, different department to help whatever needed to be done at that location. So obviously following the CDC guidelines as well. But it's all the way around the state, it's kind of handling the same, same types of issues the same way.
And is that full-time, and then we're giving the option to part-time also?
Correct. We, those are times that we want to maintain and keep, because again, we have specialty things, like in the morning, coming at 5:00 AM to clean the club. We want to keep that person engaged with us, so that when we do open the club again, they are available to come back to that shift. And that may mean that they're working in operations and programming. In the meantime, once we have exhausted resources at Courts Plus.
Yep, that sounds good. I think we're being very flexible, as long as they're flexible, too, and willing to learn a different task and cross-train a little bit.
I think, I think it's really important, too, to hang on to the staff that we have and take care of them. We just have no idea how long this is going to last. That's the hard decision to make, but we have, we have great staff, and to start, to lose them because of not being flexible would be a disservice.
Yeah, as part of those facilities, Grand Forks and Bismarck, you know, they address the part-time staff way different. Like, West Fargo is paying all their part-time staff 100% through the month of March. After March, again, as Dave said, it is really fluid, so they're, they're only doing it through the month of March. Grand Forks, right now, has set the precedent, kind of, they're going to open their facilities back up the end of March, that are April 1st. But again, those are moving, too. So, yeah, keeping those staff stayed heavy is, is key to that, because we need to head and run running once the facility's open.
And I think as long as they're willing to work. I mean, I have no interest in offering a handout, because then, then I don't think it's fair that you're paying someone for not working, and then unless you're willing to pay time and a half, or double time, to the ones that are working, to me, I, I don't think that's fair. So as long as we have something for them to do, I think it's up to them whether they want to continue to work or not.
And that's exactly what we talked over, Rusty, is, is allowing them the opportunity to stay engaged with, for those folks that we identified, that we do have to leave for the future, once we get back to what we all remember on the law. And just allow them that opportunity. If they choose not to, then we can't control that, but we do want to be as flexible and accommodating as we possibly can.
Yep, thank you.
Yep. Dave, Dave, you just hit on, I've talked to Dave Leaker a number of times over the past week or so, and flexibility and accommodating is the two key words in my mind. And it sure sounds to me, you know, the old phrase, don't let a good crisis go to waste. You're, you're, you're really seizing on that opportunity to come up with, here's some things that we could get done, since we're not doing our normal operational stuff. That, to me, that's, that's just a tremendous lift by the staff for, for you guys coming up with that, because this is an opportunity to get some of those things done that we couldn't otherwise do. And so I applaud you for, for going down that path.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, three weeks ago, I would have said to you, Beats, we're going to give you an unlimited pool of hours. Give me a list of things that you just, that you never have time to do, or, I mean, you'd smile and then get to work on this list, while I'm assuming that you've been working on this list now for a day and a half. And, and so, I mean, we not only bounce back after this, but we bounce back way better off, right? Because we got the things done that we've never, ever had time to do. And it just, it just kind of gives us an opportunity to stop for a second, because the reality is, is we have two different problems. We have the virus, which we're trying to protect all of ourselves from, and we have an economy that, you know, is going to be in serious jeopardy as this continues to go on, too. So the more we can help our sta, our, our staff and ourselves, you know, maintain as much normalcy as possible, and come out on the positive end of this thing, the better off that we can be. And I don't think anybody wants to sit at home and not do anything. I mean, that, that's not, I mean, my kids are already starting to feel it. You know, we went to pick up Jackson's stuff from the school today, and Jackson's like, you know, school isn't actually all that bad. It's, we used to, we, I miss my friends playing on the playground. I'm thinking, oh, boy, it's only Thursday.
Did you record that?
Yeah, right? But I mean, I've been trying to, to tell them, we got to, we got to establish a new norm, because, because, you know, this is not a snow day after a snow day after a snow day after a snow day, because this is, this is going to keep going on. So, yeah, I 100% support anything we can do to not only support our staff, but to make the park district better, a better place.
So, and what are we doing in-house to make sure that we are as sanitized and healthy with the staff that are together collectively? What, what kind of things are you doing there?
Yeah, we're, we're following the typical guidelines, as you can see in this meeting right now. We're trying to, you know, keep that social separation, social distancing, six feet. You know, the depot's, is very quiet here compared to most days. So I think we've allowed a good place to work for those that want to come in and work. Before and after meetings, we wipe down desks, we sanitize, we, our cleaning staff have used, you know, probably maybe a more chemically virus, anti, or antiseptic-type solution, just to clean things. I know Jody's been a big proponent of that, and our operations department's got some different chemicals and everything. So, yeah, we're taking all those steps as, and following CDC guidelines, and trying to just be as proactive and make a safe as working environment as possible, so.
Dave, do you foresee Meals on Wheels, obviously, it's been going on all week, I've been taking more than my share, I swear, but, you know, do they foresee being able to just continue? Do they see, I mean, the number I delivered today was far more than yesterday, and they say they're getting new people every day. Are we-
And I could answer this question, but I heard Brian take, I heard Brian take a big, deep breath in there, so I think he's getting ready to, to let you know. Yeah, we're going to work, I think we're going to try to backfill some of those routes with our staff, but I'll let Brian take it from here.
So we have kind of rolled all of our efforts in making sure Meals on Wheels continues on. We have discontinued any group dining, because the numbers at all of our sites were higher than that they recommend. So we're allowing a lot of the people that are reading our sites to get takeout meals, they can stop at the back, they can stop by. The sites that they regularly attended, they get a takeout meal. Some of them, we don't get around very well. We switched to Meals on Wheels, so our Meals on Wheels numbers are growing just a little bit. So far, we have had pretty good response to Facebook, notice that we put out, we put a little signal on our website, and as you'll see, I've been on KFBO Radio last week. Fronts, the park district team members have stepped in as well to make sure that the routes aren't too long, or that nobody has to take multiple orders when people are there. We are going to continue to kind of beat the bushes, to find other groups of people, you know, so hopefully you will have more volunteers to step forward. And I expect with the support of the park district team, we will be able to continue meeting these for volunteers who deliver meals.
And Brian, a couple people have asked me, or even said, oh, I'm surprised you're still delivering meals. Do we, and I know there was a message that went out to all the recipients yesterday with their meal. Is there, are we relaying something to them? Hey, we're going to keep doing this? And then do you see anything coming that may force us to stop this? And that, obviously, that can change anytime, but I don't know if you see anything coming that may be a problem for us?
So far, in the conversations I've had with the state epidemiologists, they are considering Meals on Wheels to be a priority service. So they want to work with us and make sure that Meals on Wheels can actually be available. You know, nutrition is pretty critical to this population of seniors. If they lose their meal, it's going to impact their lives pretty dramatically. So what they talked to me about, what we talked to volunteers about, first of all, is to make sure that they're feeling healthy. You know, if a volunteer shows up and they're not feeling good, we don't want them to, so communicating that. Plus, that they practice good hygiene, you know, so they wash their hands before they deliver, sometimes. Be very sanitary with them while they're delivering Meals on Wheels. We've asked them not to interact as much with the people they deliver to. So it's more of a knock on the door, hand them their meal, step back, so that there's a little bit of a buffer, a social distance thing. And not that they can't say, are you okay? Is there anything you need? But, you know, none of the hugging, or handholding, or other touching, that probably is fairly common with people who deliver Meals on Wheels. So we're trying to minimize direct physical contact, while still making sure that the meals be delivered, you know, in a safe, sanitary way.
Thank you.
Aren't you glad you're in this room?
Well-timed sneeze.
Really. So I got a couple odds and ends that I'll just add. The Attorney General was asked about his opinion for open meetings and open meeting laws, and he came out, in times of emergency like this, it's more important than ever to have, you know, follow open meeting laws. So I know there were some questions about, you know, when you have, like even today, how do we have an open meeting when you only have 10 people in a room? But the question that I don't think was, was addressed, that we need to go back and ask, and that is, you know, is a, if you have a live meeting with the access through technology, does that still, would, would that fall under the auspices of an open meeting? So we could, you know, facilitate a meeting over technology, for instance, as opposed to face-to-face? I don't think that was specifically asked. Just some other odds and ends of what we've learned already. For, for the remote worker who's going to work from home, things like chairs, you might want to think about bringing your office chair, because everybody in my day job is finding out their kitchen table chair is not very comfortable after about eight hours. So that's something you might want to think about. And then another issue that came up is, you know, if I'm printing stuff at home, I'm using up my ink, I'm using up my paper, can I get reimbursed for some of that? I'm using my cellphone to communicate, you know, how are we going to deal with those things? So, so those are some odds and ends issues that you might want to just put on your to-think-about list, so we have something that we can come up with for, for staff that are working from home.
And just to let you know, I mean, we're going to, just as a flood situation, I didn't mean to bring up the flood word, but we will be tracking all these expenses that are related to, you know, this, this pandemic, and, and make sure that if any reimbursement from the federal government's going to be available, we have everything detailed and, and down on paper. So that's a good point, Mr. President.
Is there anything the board can do to help the district? Is there, I mean, is there anything that you're, we got the emergency declaration, which we're going to look at, and I'm sure will pass and everything, but is there, is there anything you need us to be thinking about or doing as a board to, to help facilitate this whole process as we get through it?
Well, I think when we discussed it in our directors' meeting, just to be, you know, as nimble and flexible as possible, you know, as everybody knows, things are going to change hourly, daily. Hopefully, things start to calm down. But anything we can do to reassure our staff and employees, you know, I mean, everybody has different ways of handling anxiety, and some are more subtle to it. So that's something we just got to, you know, be considerate of, and, and, you know, while it doesn't affect everybody the same way, we got to make sure we take care of everyone. So that's one thing just to think about, and, and make sure they know that, you know, the director's team and, and the Commissioners are behind them, so.
I assume there's a good chance we'll be meeting again before our next board meeting. That's like three and a half weeks away, so none of us should be traveling too far.
Yeah, and, as, yeah, and as I mentioned before, we're going to have an NDRPA, you know, kind of a director's conference call tomorrow. So we're going to get a lot more feedback from other districts around the state. We'll stay in touch with the schools, the city, county, you know, and, and, you know, we're not the biggest, biggest entity in Fargo. We're the biggest park district in the state, but, you know, we're going to follow, you know, what the local directives and the state directives are, so. and the state directives are, so, um, I think we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we kind of just use our best practices and, and take advice from above.
I think the main thing for me is just making sure that we're available, we can meet on short notice, to make sure that we're taking care of our staff. It's like you say, people process as different ways and some people might think that we're crazy doing what we're doing, but we have no choice. We have to do it. We have to follow the guidelines, whether you personally believe it or not, but we want to make sure our staff is comfortable.
Yeah, and, um, and I also just want to bring up, I mean, just because it's kind of taken a backseat, but I mean, we still are looking at, you know, a higher-than-average flood this year and, and there's river elevations that are going to require a lot of manpower work, whether it's, uh, you know, 28 to 30 feet at Edgewood in the bowl, or 34 to 36 feet at, uh, El Zego. I mean, there's still things we need to take care of and, you know, we just can't let those go aside, so, um, I think we got plenty on our plate right now.
We got plenty of hands to help out with it now, though, too.
Yeah, exactly. He has, instead of handing the sandbags, you got to throw them six feet.
Well, uh, again, just to reiterate, the board has got the, the district's back. This, you know, staff is most important to us, we want to make sure we take care of them, flexibility and accommodating, and we got things that, I appreciate the, the briefing we got here today, the things that you're already doing to, uh, find work and get things done that you couldn't otherwise do, that's, that's just awesome, that's great. So thanks for, for all the hard effort.
I guess one ask I have is just send out whatever, and if you think you're sending too much to us, just send it to us, so at least we're in the loop.
Yep.
So as constituents ask us, we have the answers.
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and just, uh, to reiterate what I said earlier, too, because we're, we've talked about it again in my day job, and that's just to reach out to your staff and have a, you know, how's your day going, how are you feeling kind of conversation? Because I think there's a lot of stress out there and, and we just want to be there to make sure that, you know, we're worried about them as a human being, not as an, as much as we, you know, we're worried about them as an employee, obviously, but, uh, just have that human element to, to add to the mix, I think that's important.
Yeah, and the biggest thing there is, I mean, almost to a T, every individual could be a little bit different, we just got to have the ability to relate to each one of them, you know, 110 full-time staff and then part-time staff, so, um, yeah, it might be a little bit different for everybody, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Anything more on item four, plans and procedures? Let's move to item five. Board to consider for approval, resolution to declare emergency exists for COVID-19. Tyson, are you on? Do you want to brief us on this? Or Dave, or are you going to do it?
Commissioner, is there a matter of emergency declaration, resolution that relates to COVID-19? Well, in my view, this week, City of Fargo signed a declaration of emergency, it's being asserted for the health and safety assistance of Fargo. Um, so the resolution of Florida was put together based on the resolution of the priority of the Fargo, and also through consultation with our attorney. Um, so what this declaration essentially does is it's declaring that emergency exists, not operating, not taking immediate measures, going to the hardship, um, that by this result has thrown COVID-19, um, and then the declaration is being in effect until the City of Fargo president indicates that emergency no longer exists. Uh, I did read out to some other park districts throughout this state, and I heard back from Grand Forks Park District today, and they sent me some information from the league of cities on FEMA funding. And if the resolution isn't required for FEMA funding, we are covered under the president's declaration and the governor's declaration. So basically what this is doing is just declaring, putting out that it is, declaring that emergency exists, not operating, not taking any actions that might be necessary. So I can answer any questions if you have anything else?
This looks good and I just don't see any downside in, in moving forward with this.
I agree.
I agree.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Do we need a vote on this, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to call the vote?
Commissioner Graves?
Aye.
Commissioner Popacek?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Deutsch?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosted?
Yes. Motion passes.
All right, um, before we get adjourned, Diane, did you draw the law, the small straw? Or did, was there anything that you wanted to, to update us on from an HR perspective? Since you're the only director that got to the room and got a seat.
I only wanted to be here to make sure to answer any questions that you may have as far as the staff is concerned. Um, I reiterate, obviously, everything that Dave has said is that we are here to make sure that we are supporting the staff as much as we possibly can and that we will work with, uh, work with them to find them something to do when we need to, uh, you know, if they can't continue to do what they're currently doing. Um, information is being posted to the staff on our, on our park bench, uh, put some things out on the HR page, takes them a, a link to the CDC, it gives them information how to contact the village, so that if there's any mental health needs that they may have, as we've said, everybody processes this differently. Um, also information to let them know what our insurance is doing to help them, uh, through this time as well. So, um, I didn't draw the short staff, I actually volunteered to be here, so it's okay.
Well, and I should have called you earlier and I didn't think about it, so.
I do have a miscellaneous, if I can, it could have fallen under number four, if I can just add.
Yep.
You know, I'm thinking golf right now, like everyone else, I'm kind of the golf hotline that people are calling me, wondering what's going on, even though we're three weeks out from even thinking about golfing, but, you know, in my mind, golf is one of those activities, it's outside and, and we would encourage that where we're sitting today. You know, it might change where one-on-one, point of sale, you know, where it's not 10 people and you need to figure out a way. But I guess I just want to throw it out there and see if we're thinking about that. When we get to it, how can we accommodate that if it's remote point of sale and people can still play? And maybe not only golf, but frisbee golf, or I think any outdoor activity is healthy right now, as long as you have your distancing. So you guys might be talking about that already, but I want to make sure it's on the plate and when we get to that time, just finding a way to get people out and get out of the house and-
Yeah, and I think-
And still play, play by the rules that are in place at the time.
And that's, and that's a good point, Commissioner, Commissioner Popacek. Um, we have discussions about golf and other outdoor activities. Uh, we've actually, you know, the discussion today was about playgrounds and, and how do we handle playgrounds? I mean, do we sign them properly? Do we close them down? Do we sanitize them? And, um, so we are considering all those options and we realize, I mean, the best thing you can do is to be outside. I mean, typically, you know, the virus prob, I'm not a epidemiologist or anything like that, but I'm guessing the viruses break down in ultraviolet light better than anything else and then you have your social distancing on the outside. So, yeah, we're talking about all those things and, and how can we provide recreational services to the public? Because of course, everybody's been kept up or kept inside all winter and, you know, that's kind of a problem, but once we get outside, uh, we do want to look at those things and we do want to have that available, so, yeah, that's a great point.
And I think be very flexible, be very accommodating, it could be a way to grow the game. Introduce people to it that haven't done it before because we're giving them the opportunity to get out there.
There'll probably be a lot of things that-
Keep an open mind, you're right.
That come out of this that nobody ever realized.
Thank you.
Well, and to grow on Rusty's comment, just, you know, what are our marketing opportunities to get out there now to tell people, hey, you, you don't have to sit in the house completely, but if you go take a walk at one of our parks or whatever, there's, there's things that people can do that they can get out of the house but not put themselves at risk.
Yep.
And I bet, I don't look at our website much and maybe we're doing it, but if we're not, encourage you to do that and just blast stuff out there that maybe people just haven't thought about doing it and all of a sudden we have people that, we've got them hooked and they do it longer term.
Yeah, and Katie, are you over in the other meeting room?
Yeah, she's on the screen right before.
Oh.
Yes, yes. Uh, currently, we actually have enacted a couple of things, uh, along the line. On our social media, we're posting daily activities, encouraging people to be active or to take a break, um, with, with their kids or with their family. Uh, Courts Plus is also doing similar things where they are hosting daily workouts, um, where there's a full class that people can do a lot of occasions at home. So we're providing ways to encourage the activity and getting outside, um, even though our programs and our events are shut down.
Thank you very much.
That's great.
Thanks, Katie.
They're very interesting, thank you for doing that.
Oh, great, I'm going to do it.
And while we did wake up to snow and bitter cold wind this morning, it's supposed to be 40 by Friday, I mean, by Sunday, so that's good news.
Wheeler was saying like upper 50s and 60s by next weekend. I haven't seen that in any other forecast, though.
I just thought we were back to at least 40 by Sunday because I'm, it was hard keeping my kids outside today.
Better than the five inches of snow that Grand Forks got today.
Yeah, for sure. All right, anything else, or can we adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, everyone.
True, thank you. Thanks for everyone for being online, too.